Welcome to our evening meeting for June 25th. The Board held its regular afternoon session at 3:00 PM today and followed by work session and closed session later. Item L, certification resolution. In the closed sessions just concluded, nothing was discussed except the matters which were identified by the motions to convene in closed session. Only those matters lawfully permitted to be discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed. Is there a motion to adopt a certification resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Obey.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps the minutes should recognize that Ms. Hooker was not in attendance during the closed session. Is that correct, Martha?
That is correct. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Let's note that in the future on our minutes. When we set it up for the next meeting. Thank you very much. Anyone got a problem with that?
No, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you, Ms. Hooker.
Thank you.
At this time, we will move on to item M, public hearings and second reading ordinances, item number one. The petition of Neil Aneja to obtain a special use permit to operate a short-term rental on approximately .30 acres of land zoned R1, low-density residential district located at 2726 White Pelican Lane, Cave Spring Magisterial District. Chair recognizes Philip Thompson, Director of Planning. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. This one you have seen before. And so this, again, this is a special use permit request for a short-term rental. The property is located off of White Pelican Lane. So it's deep within the Penn Forest subdivision. So a lot of residential uses around it. Address is 2726 White Pelican Lane. This is in the Cave Spring Magisterial District. It's 0.3 acre in size. There is a single-family residence, and they are seeking a special use permit for short-term rental. Obviously, I think everyone's aware, they've been doing short-term rental for some time. Couple pictures of the home, front view of the house, kind of the entryway as well, kind of the backyard with a deck and patio. And these are the two side yard views of the property. And it's fairly flat along the road and then rises towards the back. Kind of a layout. So the house is 2,382 square feet in size, five bedrooms, three bathrooms, living room, dining room, eating kitchen. They do have security cameras installed to monitor who comes and goes. The driveway can serve probably three vehicles due to its narrowness. Again, here's just another floor plan that was submitted by the applicant, kind of showing the layout, and then the upper level. Again, we went over this early today, but a short-term rental is defined as the provision of a room or space that is suitable or intended for occupancy for dwelling, sleeping, or lodging purposes for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days in exchange for a charge for the occupancy. Again, we do have standards. In addition to a special use permit, you need to get a zoning permit, which provides information about the property, about the applicant, about the person who would resolve any complaints. If any change to the applicant's address or personal contact information is taking place, he needs to notify us within 30 days. The short-term rental zoning permit expires. If there's a change in ownership, the new owner would have to get a new zoning permit. And then a short-term rental zoning permit can be revoked by the zoning administrator if there's violations against the applicable regulations or county code. Again, this is less than five acres, so they require a special use permit. Surrounding zoning, all R1. It's in the middle of a heavily density residential area. It is neighborhood conservation, which establishes single-family residential neighborhoods, and the existing development pattern is encouraged. A little bit about the history. In November of 2022, the Board of Supervisors denied this same request for a special use permit for short-term rental. Since the denial, the applicant has continued to list the property online platforms advertising as short-term rental use. The enforcement started in April of 2022. There were numerous cases that have been heard in general district court and circuit court and are under advisement for both applicants, one being through March of 2025 and one being through the end of, or July 25th of 2024. So on June 4th, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing. There were three citizens who spoke during the public hearing in opposition to the request. They had several concerns. Those included, you know, the short-term rental use has been going on for a long time without any approvals, parking on the street, and cars blocking mailboxes, the commercial use or nature of the use, and that it's not suitable for this neighborhood. They also talked about traffic safety and noise being concerns. The applicant has not been following the rules, codes, or ordinances, and the narrowness and length of the driveway will not allow five cars to be parked in it. The Planning Commission discussed a variety of items. Those included no changes have been made to the application since 2022 for a supervised denial, zoning enforcement history, including the general district and circuit court cases, the continued use of the short-term rental use without county approvals, there's not enough space to park five vehicles on site, past parking issues, noise, impact to the neighborhood, special use permit conditions, and then how can the county expect the applicants to comply with conditions when they have not complied with the county regulations to date? So, Planning Commission recommends denial of the special use permit for the short-term rental based on those issues. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson, Board?
No, sir.
Okay. There are no questions, Mr. Thompson. Does Representatives for the petitioners wish to speak? Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. My name's Mike Massey. I'm an attorney in the area. I represent Neil and Aneja and his mother. I was here at the Commissioners, at the Board of Commissioners meeting. I don't have anything to add. I believe, based on speaking with Mr. Lubak, and that there's this probably, well, if you have any questions for me, we are, my client is willing to restrict the five parking space to three parking spaces, that it would remain in the driveway only. We had submitted at the last meeting that we do a, if the Board would be willing to maybe do a restrictive grant to, through March 2025, and grant to see if there are any other issues, and return back in March of 2025, allowing him to grant the Airbnb permit, but come back at that time, and if there are problems, then deny it. But certainly, that was also discussed greatly at the Board of Commissioners meeting. It is agreed that there are no changes from his application since now. We did go to court in March of 2024, and those matters are under advisement, that he cannot have any more violations whatsoever between now and March of 2025.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the petitioner?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mahoney?
Evening, Mr. Massey. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, sir.
Were you representing the applicants back in November of 22?
I was not.
But when did you start?
I began in January of 2024, when I was made aware of the violations and got involved to go to court with him to help stop that.
Okay.
Had some very, as I advised the Board of Commissioners, had some very long conversations with him, that there's no situation in which it was acceptable to have violations, and that that needed to stop completely without fail.
You understand that back in November 22, this Board considered all the issues and listened to the citizens? Has, apart from what you just indicated, has your clients made any changes at all to the application from what they submitted back?
No. As was stated, there were no changes from the application in November of 2022 to now.
And you're aware this is R1, a single-family zoning district?
Yes.
This is neighborhood conservation?
Yes.
In the materials that we have in our agenda, your client is identifying himself as a super host under Airbnb. And it also indicated that there was something like 2,224 stays and 7,761 nights. I assume that's not for White Pelican, that's for other?
Correct. That's all his properties. That's right.
Do you know how many properties he owns?
I don't know exactly how many properties, but it's more than, more than three. So, but I would not know how many he's got exactly.
I see. Okay. Because in one of the communications we've received, one of the citizens, one of the neighbors had indicated they had done some research, and I think they had identified something like 20, 20 different properties, most of them being in City of Roanoke.
That's correct. That's correct. But I could not speak to what?
Okay. In the materials in our agenda, as part of the application, your client also indicated that he was a full-time Airbnb host, and he has a full-time staff. Does your client have any other employment or business, or is it all operating short-term rentals?
He's an entrepreneur. He does some, primarily, this is his primary business, Airbnbs, short-term rentals.
From the materials that are in our agenda, your client submitted several reviews from guests who stayed at the White Pelican property in September of 2023, October 2023, June of 23, and July of 23, and had, I guess, favorable reviews with all of them? I guess I would conclude that, based on that, your client is experienced and knowledgeable in the business. But would you think that someone who's experienced and knowledgeable in the business, operating short-term rentals, would get a business license, would get zoning permission, and pay transient occupancy taxes to the locality in which they operate? And they've done none of those things?
Mr. Mahoney, I have advised him, and I advise the Board of Commissioners, and I would advise you, that what, operating the Airbnb without a permit was unacceptable.
Okay.
And so, again, had I been involved with him back before, my belief would have been it would not have happened, advising him. So my hope and my belief is, is that it will not happen again. He's not had violations since the March date at least, and I know that's a short term, and he is not allowed or permitted to have any more violations between now and March of 2025, or he will be found guilty of all that are hanging over his head. So, and that would be the carrot, I guess, that would, that would...
Compel him to comply.
Compel him to comply.
Okay. When they began the process, I guess, back in July of 2022, they had been operating the short-term rental without the appropriate permit. And then even after the denial in November of 22, they still continued to operate in violation. And that's your knowledge? You know that, correct?
I now know that, yes, sir.
Okay. And, I don't know, I guess I'm just concerned that he has continued to operate in violation for all these years. I understand what you're saying. You've counseled him not to do that. And I gather when you were, you had your case before court in, what is it?
March 28th.
March 28th?
Yes, sir.
I think there was a finding or an agreement that there was sufficient evidence on all five charges, and that's why it was continued over to 2025, and with the admonition that they would not unlawfully operate a short-term rental.
Correct.
Have you, the county attorney has prepared for us a booklet. Have you, Mr. Lubak, could you?
Mr. Mahoney, there are copies for Mr. Massey up on the stand.
Could you look at, when you get a moment, look at that. This binder has certified copies of court documents. It's definitely not comprehensive. It's just a quick review of what we found on the online Commonwealth of Virginia court But are you aware that your client has convictions of offenses in Fairfax County, Amherst County, Roanoke City, Roanoke County, and the city of Lynchburg?
Mr. Mahoney, I can't speak to any of this. I have no, no knowledge of this. I'm only aware as to, as to the, what he's been charged with here in the county regarding the short-term rental.
So you're not, if I asked you to look at tab number seven, you're not aware of the convictions in the city of Roanoke?
I have no knowledge.
2017?
No, sir.
Your client persisted in violating the city's zoning ordinance. May of, May 3rd, 2018, the court revoked and imposed a $100 fine of the suspended 300. Isn't it a problem that all these convictions, all these revocations were occurring in the city of Roanoke, and then your client comes to Roanoke County and continues to do the same kind of violations here? Why should we trust, why should we trust your client?
Mr. Mahoney, I can't speak to that. I'm not able to address that.
With respect to Ms. Shama Khakkar?
Mr. Aneja's mother.
Yes. In the spring of this year, she met with county staff. Are you aware that she admitted to county planning staff that her son was continuing to rent out the property at White Pelican unlawfully, but he claimed he had to do it as a business necessity?
I was not there. I would not be able to speak to that.
Okay.
And I'm not being cagey. I just, I just don't know.
Okay. And she is the legal owner of White Pelican, correct?
That is correct. That's right.
If you would look at the other binder, that's her criminal history. Look at tab two. Again, this is a reference back to 2017 in the city of Roanoke. But you're indicating you're not aware of any of those?
I am not aware, no, sir.
And that, again, the tab three, her convictions, and how she was ordered not to use the property as a rental?
No, sir. No, no knowledge.
Well, it just seems to me that your clients don't seem to be interested in following the law. So with this history, I appreciate your representations to us. With this history, I don't have a whole lot of trust.
I understand.
No further questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions for the petitioner's representative? Thank you very much, Mr. Massey. And at this time, we will open the public hearing. This means we would appreciate all who've come to address the Board today. When your name is called, please come forward and state your name and address prior to your comments. Each person is permitted to speak up to three minutes. At the front of the podium is a light system that tells you how much time you have remaining. When the light changes from green to yellow, please share any concluding remarks. When the light changes from yellow to red, your time has ended. So with that said, the first person who signed up to speak this evening on this subject, M1, short-term rental, is John Conti. Would you please step forward and give us your name for the record and your address? Thank you, sir.
Yes, hello. My name is John Conti. I live at 2720 White Pelican Lane, directly next door to the property in question. I just wanted to make a quick statement that I am against this Airbnb. It has affected my family, the childhood of my two children, all the traffic that's been going on, the parties that have been held here. It's been treated as a, kind of like a conference center. They, they allow 10 people to stay there. Those 10 people invite their 10 friends, and they all come over. They bring out coolers full of alcohol. They play music into the night. They try to play football in the street with my children. I'm the one that has to call Airbnb and notify them. I say, there's a party going on here against your policies. And they say, well, how do you know it's a party? Because I don't know what their definition of a party is, but they say, well, is there loud music? I said, it doesn't need to be loud music. There's at least 35 people here. That's not allowed. So about six hours or so later, Neil, I believe, had them evicted at about 2:00 or 3:00 AM. So eventually, that got to it. So I don't know how he's going to be able to police his own property with his cameras. I know that cameras are there. I can see them. But I don't see any way that he can actually police this property and maintain how he wants to operate, the number of cars, the number of people. I know no pets are allowed there. I've seen pets brought in, two large dogs brought in with crates going into the home. I know that was a violation of what's on the description of the property on the Airbnb website as well. So I just, I don't see how he will be able to comply. He hasn't complied in the past. It's taken me time away from my family to come here, time away from work to come here. I've had, you know, frustrating conversations with my wife. It's brought me and my neighbors closer, which has been nice. But, you know, my daughter doesn't have the same childhood playing out in the street as my son did before all this started happening. This street is a street where it's nice and flat. There's a cul-de-sac. That's where everyone goes to learn to ride their bikes. My daughter's starting to do that. We have new kids on the block as well. We have seven, eight, nine kids on this street, and I don't think this is a conducive environment to raising these children. And I ask you to turn this down and vote no. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is John Bingham. If you'd come forward, please, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Bingham. And I live at 2725 White Pelican Lane, which is across the street from 2726. The main thing I want to say to you is, and it sounds like you've already covered a lot of things, so I'll leave those things alone. I think the main thing is I'd like the neighborhood to stay residential in nature, and that's really the mainstay of what, what was planned, what people have purchased as they purchased their homes on the street. And even the, even the person who's seeking the permit bought their home with the idea of it being a single-family residence, which is really the purpose of the neighborhood and the housing on the street. There are 14 houses on the street, so it's not a very large street, but it is closed off, and it's a very nice and quiet place most of the time. And that's why we have lived there for 30 years. So I would just say, in fairness to the other property owners, I ask that you would vote this down. I want to also say there's been some other things. There's been, the safety of the children is a big, a big risk on this street because it is one of the few areas that is flat and level, and the children tend to flock there because it's easy to play and run around. And we have a lot, we have a lot of basketball goals and things like that that keep them occupied. So it is a safety thing in my mind, although my children are long gone. The parking has been a disturbance ever since it's been there, but I think that's been covered in several things you've heard already tonight. So I'm just going to leave you with an example. And this example happened between February 11th and the 22nd. There was a rental to a solar panel company who had seven different individuals staying at the home. They were all unrelated. They were here selling solar panels across the county in Roanoke City. And I happened to speak with one of them a couple of times, and I found out the reason that they were on White Pelican is because the other place that they were at couldn't manage the parking, and so they had to move them to a place that could. And even in White Pelican, seven cars don't fit in front of this one residence, so it was even a problem there. But there was a, one night, there was some kind of get-together with people there, and there was 12 or 15 cars out on the street, and pretty much within two homes down, one in each direction, and in front of his, his house and my home, cars were all in the street. This is just an example of what can happen. It's not like that all the time, but it does happen, and it's not the owner that has to deal with this, it's the neighbors that have to deal with this. And so I ask, as you're thinking about this, that you keep us in mind as to what you would want in your neighborhood, and how you would like it to be, remain a residence area instead of having a commercial business that operates exactly when you're coming home to relax. So that's my comments, and I appreciate your time and your attention.
Mr. Bingham, just, can you clarify that date again, when the installers were there?
They were there from, I have a list of 90 other dates that happened in the last year here, and the dates I have were February 11th to February, it's either 22nd or 23rd.
This year?
Of this year, yes.
For the record, I don't know, the Board may recall that the clerk had forwarded to us the letter that Mr. Bingham had sent to us, I think, last Friday, I think it was that. I think all the Board members received a copy of that.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for the time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Karen Mitchell? Ms. Mitchell, if you'd state your name for the record and address, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Mitchell, and I live at 2743 White Pelican Lane. And I just want to echo what both of the Johns before me have been sharing. You know, we've lived there 47 years. So our children were raised on White Pelican. Our grandchildren grew up coming over and learning to ride their bikes and all on our street. And now I push my great-grandbaby in her stroller, and my little great-grandson rides along on his trike. So that's the kind of neighborhood that we've had all these years. I think that there maybe has been four homes sold in, on our street in the last couple years, and all of them are, have young children. Well, one's expecting. The others have young children, and so the street has quite a number of young children on it. And the big concern, this 30-day rental, I mean, these are, I don't mean this to sound, you know, snobby or whatever, but I mean, it's, they're transient. And so, you know, they have no real interest in the neighborhood. They have no investment or stake in the neighborhood. They have, you know, no sense of neighborliness and camaraderie in the neighborhood like we do. And so I just don't think that this, this would be good for the street to have this business. It's right in the middle of the street. It's in the middle of one side. They're in the house on White Pelican that's not affected by all the traffic. The one that John mentioned where there was a lot of cars out there, one of them was a soup duck car, and the guy drove very fast on and off the street. It's a small street. I mean, at the end of the street, the sign says .14, so it's 1400ths, I guess, of a mile. It's not even the length of a football field or anything. It's a very small street. And, you know, we, we all have loved living on the street, appreciate all that Roanoke County does for us, the services, the great schools. We feel safe, but this is a big concern. And especially since, you know, with the 30-day rental, it's strangers. I mean, somebody's got a child, his friends over here at this house, are you as comfortable with him just running over to the friend's house? These are strangers. We don't, we don't know who they are. And, and so we would certainly appreciate that you're taking this, our, our request into consideration and voting no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Holly Dulaney. Holly Dulaney? Thank you, Holly. Will you please state your full name and your address for the record?
Holly Dulaney, 2702 White Pelican Lane. Thank you all for listening, and we appreciate you not giving him the permit last year, but he was able to show his true colors by just breaking the rules. But, so this has been such a traumatic course of events for, I would say, the highest would be John Conti's family. They almost moved. They contemplated moving. They were just being, I mean, it was just, it was horrible. So, you know, we've been there for almost 16 years. It's, you know, my kids are 16 and 14 now. My 16-year-old's driving, and we make sure he goes really slow down the road because there's always kids. There's always kids. You just never know when somebody, and then there's baby deer and stuff. It's just, it's such a quiet neighborhood and just... deer. It's just, it's such a quiet neighborhood and street. There's retirees. There's young families. It's just, this is basically a hotel. And, you know, like, they've had weddings there. It's just, it's just not been appropriate. But we hope that you guys vote no on this, and I have a feeling you guys will. And I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does the clerk have anyone else signed up to speak? Is anyone else in the audience who hasn't signed up but does want to speak? Okay. With that said, we will close the public hearing. And at this time, I will ask, is there a motion on the petition?
Yes, sir. Let me also make a comment first. As I said this afternoon, before my wife and I decided to downsize and try to move to a patio home, one-level living, we had lived for 36, almost 37 years up on Skylark, which is about four blocks away from you all, White Pelican. And my wife and I would also often walk through the neighborhood and do the circle around the high school. So I know the neighborhood very well. And I think for the board members' benefit, if you looked at the map of White Pelican and how this is buried in Penn Forest, it's well off of Chapparal. But you look at that street, and as they indicated, it's a short, one-block cul-de-sac with about seven or eight homes on either side. So it's a very, very short, very narrow residential street. And I think that's important, particularly when you look at, number one, the size of the lot that is subject to the application, three-tenths of an acre, as compared to some of the other applications that we've considered that have been almost three acres or two, two-and-a-half acres. When you're in a small lot, like most of the lots are in Penn Forest, it's a challenge to have this kind of activity. Many of the other applications we've considered and approved have had off-street parking. This does not have off-street parking. You may be able to park one car in the driveway, but if you have four or five other cars for all the other bedrooms, it's an adverse impact on the neighbors. You look at, from the application, and I appreciate the applicants, it sounds like they have a very successful business. If Airbnb calls them a super host, and with all the other properties they have, I guess primarily in Roanoke City, they've had over 2,000 stays and 7,000 nights. This is a business. And I think this is fundamentally different from some of the other applications we've had, where you've had an individual, a husband and wife own a house, and they're willing to have a short-term rental for maybe the basement, or apartments in the basement. And the owners live there. They can monitor the activities, make sure that this is not turning into a party house, make sure that you don't have loud music to tune warning. I think that's different. And in effect, what we are seeing is a commercial use in a residential district. And I think that's a little bit different than some of the other applications we've seen. I don't know how many other properties the applicants own. I think Mr. Bingham, from some of his research, had indicated maybe 20. I don't know that for a fact. But when we look at the criminal history records that our attorney has gathered for me, clearly they had property in the city of Roanoke, and they've had problems and violations in the city of Roanoke. They've had the same issues in the city of Roanoke that they have here. This is a business. This is not a residential use. So I think with those elements, under our code and under our ordinance, we, the board, have to make certain findings before you can grant a special use permit. And I can't make those findings here. I think this use is inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the county's comprehensive plan. It is inconsistent with good zoning practice. Like I said, this is a business, not a residential use. And more importantly, it will result, and has resulted, and will continue to result, in substantial detriment to the community. We've had almost two years' worth of violations where the applicants, we've taken them to court. There's been judgments against them. They've been found guilty, and they continue to operate. In effect, they're thumbing their nose at the neighbors, this board, this county, and the judicial system. I appreciate what Mr. Massey has indicated, that he's tried to counsel his clients. Sorry. I just don't, with that, with that history, I can't make a finding and trust this applicant to comply with the provisions of the county code. With that being said, members of the board, I would move that this board deny the request. We also, I would also request that a transcript of this matter be attached to the denial exhibit, the denial ordinance as an exhibit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. With that said, is there a second to the motion made by the gentleman in case prayer?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? With that said, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Moving on tonight with our next item on the agenda, the petition of Reed Solar LLC to obtain a special use permit for a major utility solar farm on 36.48 acres located 9150 Reed Road, Windsor Hills District. We are advised that this matter has been postponed until further notice. Is that still the case?
Yes, the planning commission has...
Could you talk into the mic, please?
Sure.
I know they decided to do something. What was it?
Yeah, the planning commission continued the public hearing to its August 6th meeting.
Okay, that's good.
So potentially, if they take action, it may be on your August 20th, I believe, is your meeting date. That would be the soonest that you would hear.
When is that August date?
It is August 20th.
We only have one meeting in August.
Right. So that would be the time, if they take action, that you would, might be a little tricky, but...
Okay, we've just one, we've got two more here. Philip, the petition of Roanoke Valley Holdings LLC to remove a property condition on 50.8 acres, sewn R1C, located 6200 Crumpacker Drive, Hollis Magisterial District. Now, this one, I'm getting different stories by the minute, if you will. It said that this matter has been postponed. I noticed the other night, when I was up there at the location, their public sign was posted for July 2nd.
Correct.
And I was told the petitioner's not going to be in town in July. So I mean, I don't know what to believe, and the public sure does deserve a good answer.
Sure. So let's talk about that. They originally were supposed to be scheduled for June and for this meeting. The day before the planning commission meeting, they requested to be pulled off the agenda and postponed. So we sent out letters to everyone saying it would be postponed until we heard back from the applicant.
Right.
We then received notice, an email notice from a representative of Mr. Frayland's company, asking to be put on the July 2nd and July 23rd public hearings for the board. So we have scheduled a public hearing, and then we resent out notices to the citizens, letting them know of those two dates.
So we can, we've sent notices to citizens three times?
Correct.
Once for June and...
One saying is tabled, and then one saying when the actual dates were.
Boy, that's nice. I'm glad we're communicating to the citizens. I wasn't aware that we'd sent so many mailers. But my point is, people need to know. And the other thing is, Mr. Frayland was not planning to be in attendance, and they told me that he would not be there in July. So this is disappointing to me personally, as representative of that area, that the representatives will be there from his company, but he won't. So I'm just wanting to comment on that. Okay. So thank you for clarification on what we think are the dates, and I hope we don't have to send four and five more mailers. The petition of Robert and Jerry Jackson, item four, to obtain a special use permit to operate a short-term rental on approximately .5768 acres of land, sewn R1, located 1727 Mountain Heights Drive, Catawba District. I'm told this matter has been postponed until further notice. Do you have any different status?
No. So what happened, there was a public hearing at the planning commission. The planning commission recommended denial of this request. Mr. Jackson, him and his wife are having some health issues. And so, you know, at any point, an applicant could put their application on hold for up to six months.
Okay.
And so he was going to have some, he found out, he was going to have, you know, before the public hearings were scheduled, that he was going to have a need to go, have a procedure done. So he requested, like, he wants to postpone it and maybe come back in the fall, is what he indicated. As soon, you know, what will happen, so we did send out notices to all those property owners, notifying them that it's on hold. When we do have a date for that to come back, he will only have to come back before your, you know, your public hearing, since it's already gone to the planning commission. But when he gets us that date, then we will send out notices to the appropriate, whenever the appropriate date would be.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update. Moving on to item N, citizen comments communications. Do we have anyone signed up to speak further tonight? Anyone in the audience that needs to speak to the board that hasn't signed up? Okay. With that said, we'll move on to item O, reports and inquiries of board members. Ms. Shepherd?
I really don't have a whole lot to share tonight, other than the USA Cycling Event announcement that we attended yesterday at Explorer Park. And I am really excited to see that come. I will be interested to watch it myself, knowing that if I tried to mountain bike over anything, I would likely be sliding down like a sled. So I'm excited to see that come to Roanoke, and that's all I've got.
I'm glad that you've decided not to ride a mountain bike, because yesterday I thought maybe you took one too many spills there.
Yes.
All right. Ms. Hooker, do you have any comments from afar?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, first and foremost, just wanted to say thank you to the IT team that worked hard to make this, this meeting work for me virtually tonight. And I really appreciate all the work that went in. It was a great team working together to make this happen. So thank you very much. And then the second thing, I want to congratulate Tammy, and I'm pleased that I get to be the first one to do that. You ran a good, positive campaign, and now we are pleased to serve with you as a duly-elected peer. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes, sir.
Could you describe for us the sunset at Top Sale?
It has been awesome. It has been beautiful, and we're thoroughly enjoying it, thoroughly enjoying the grandkids. So I'll be home soon.
Perfect. You know, Ms. Hooker, I'm sad to say that we never were invited or extended invitation to join you. We will remember that when you return. Just so be served.
I hear you.
Mr. Mahoney? Two items. I think, I want to emphasize again what I think is a good news item, and it is on our consent agenda. And Roanoke County's been able to secure two grants from the Department of Criminal Justice Services totaling about $650,000 that would allow us to hire school resource officers, to try to have a school resource officer at every elementary school in Roanoke County. And I think that's good news. And it's been, we've been, oh, golly, we've been working on this for, what, two years, to try to get the grants and find the people and hire the men and women to be SROs. So we're making progress. The second and final topic is, I'd like staff to look more closely at the 419 road improvement project. Unfortunately, I missed the June 17th open house community meeting that was held on this project, the open house on this project. I have heard more irate citizen comments on this project than I've heard on any of the other open houses that I've attended on road projects over the last five-plus years I've been on this board. The primary objection is, the proposal is to eliminate through-traffic going on Starkey from north or south, or south to north, across 419, in effect, forcing people to have to make a right-hand turn and go down the road a couple hundred feet and try to make a U-turn on 419 to come back around the other way. I understand that we, the board, have asked Virginia Department of Transportation to try to look at measures to, I guess, increase the, not necessarily the speed, but the through-traffic on 419. And so this whole idea is to cut off crossing traffic. But I would hope that we might look more closely at that and perhaps reconsider our approach there. I can see, for example, you know, coming out and off of Starkey, and you're going to come down 419, you're going to make a left-hand turn to come down Bernard in front of this building. I don't know if that stacking lane's going to be long enough to catch all those people who'll be coming across, or would otherwise come across. You know, if you look at, you come across 419 to Starkey, you're going to Hunting Hills, you're going to Friendship, the Friendship facility that's down there. You're going to all the townhouses and condominiums and apartments that are further down Starkey as you get to Buck Mountain Road. And then conversely, if you're going the other way across Starkey, you know, you're getting to the hotel and a lot of the businesses there, and that's also a way to Tanglewood West. I feel we're talking out of both sides of our mouth in that we want to help the traffic going down 419, but I'm just afraid that by eliminating that, that crossing at Starkey might be a problem. So I'd ask if our staff could maybe reconsider that and look more closely at that. But as I said, I've received more comments on this topic than any of the other traffic projects that we've looked at over the last couple of years in the 419 Tanglewood area. And then I understand how the grant process works. You've got to score points. And one way you score points is you put in bike lanes. I think I've only seen one bicycle on that stretch of 419. The one man I see, and several of you may have seen him, an unfortunate older gentleman who's disabled, who's in a motorized wheelchair. Now, I've seen him use the bike lane, but that's about the only person I've ever seen in a bike lane. But I know, I know as part of scoring points on the grant, that's what you need to do. But I just hope maybe we could look at some of these things and make it a little more common sense.
Let me just, let me just go ahead and add something to your request now that we're on. Excuse me, Mr. Radford.
That's fine.
I would like to see, because I'm a transportation nut, I want to see the traffic count, if we can petition VDOT to do a traffic count for five days, Monday through Friday, or Sunday through Saturday, for the traffic coming onto 419, off Starkey, all the way over to Tanglewood Square, and back in both directions. I'd like to see that traffic count, because that's the traffic that you're potentially are going to eliminate making the turn, or coming across the road to save maybe 20 seconds of time at the stoplight. And that's the traffic that's going to be pushed out onto 419 or down 419 to come in the backway to get to Hunting Hills. So I would say to you this, that that will affirm the concern when we get that number. If this is another artery, then they have nowhere near the volume that they do here elsewhere in the county, and maybe in other parts of the state where they're doing the very same thing. So there are exceptions to everything. This may be one. So I'm asking staff to get that count.
I think the traffic count is excellent, because this one citizen quoted a percentage, but not numbers.
Yeah.
And said 49% of the traffic crosses over one direction.
Yeah.
29% is the other direction. But I don't know what those numbers are. So you could be 49% of 10 cars.
Somebody's got them. Well, if they don't, they can get them with that long counter they cross the road. Everyone runs over it. Mr. Radford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I've got a few things. First of all, I want to also congratulate Tammy Shepherd as her honor victory last Tuesday. I agree with Martha. We're looking forward to letting you serve with us until your next election, which will be 2025. election, which will be 2025, but I thought you did run a very clean and classy race, and I just hope you've had time to get all your signs up.
They're all up.
Okay.
Save them.
Very good. I got a couple pieces of sad news, I just got a email that another real estate icon has passed away, Maury Strauss has passed away, ninety-nine years old. He and my father were in the same era growing up. Steve Strauss, the son, also followed him in the real estate development and housing and commercial, too, so, sorry to hear that, for the, for the Strauses, but it sounds like he lived a nice, long life. Another piece of sad news is, we found out about a week and a half ago that an abortion clinic is gonna open up in the town of Vinton, and that's alarming to a lot of people. And as I found out, some additional information that that medical company had actually been looking at property on Starkey Road, and had been looking in Salem. Unfortunately, they landed in the town of Vinton. I plan to bring to, here in the next month, month or two, to our board members, some type of ordinance that we can have a safe zone for life, so, we'll be talking about that. There are some model ordinances out there right now in our Virginia, other Virginia cities and towns southwest of us. Virginia's becoming a hub for abortion clinics, because North Carolina has clamped down, so they're coming north, and they're coming into Roanoke. We'll now have three abortion clinics in Roanoke. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. First, congratulations, Tammy, look forward to working with you. So, all the, all the political, political work is done, now we gotta roll our sleeves up and show those citizens that voted for you, and the ones that didn't, why you're the choice of this board, but also, why you won that election. And you've got plans, and I look forward to seeing the plans you have to bring the community together, and tell them how great Roanoke County is, and how you're working for them, so...
Thank you.
There you go. Also, just a couple quick items, June fourteenth, Explorer Park had a concert series kickoff, well, actually, the second of five concerts, the second Friday of every month, it's a free concert at Explorer Park, they got some great bands, they play from about, I guess, six to nine, somewhere like that, so you get out there and bring your own chairs, in case you can't get a picnic table, because people, you know, use the tables, and they also use to bring their own chairs, families come, they bring the kids, a great event, and it's free of charge. Four hundred people attended the second one, and I was there for both the first and second one, and I hope to be there if I'm not out of town for the rest of the events. They're really popular, and it's some great music, and it's a great venue to be at, they've got food for sale out there, and cold beverages, both alcoholic and non-alcoholic, and so, you can bring your own water in if you want to, or what have you. On June twenty-first, I attended the police graduation, and I tried to get the, I never, this is the first time I didn't get a brochure of who was graduating, and I asked, I asked Assistant Police Chief Tuck today by voicemail, but he must be out of the area, but all those Roanoke County officers and deputy sheriffs, as well as those in the other parts of the area that graduated, congratulations, and welcome to Roanoke County for those working for us. And with that said, I'll ask if there's a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or the clerk can call the roll, whichever you want to, I think we just did.
We just did.
Thank you, appreciate it, adjourned.